I'd like to call the morning session of the November 3, 2025, meeting of the Johnston County Board of Commissioners to Order, and welcome all of you who are packed in here this morning, and I think there's probably some in the hallway, too. Good to see all of you here today, and also welcome those who are watching on our livestream. Thank you for tuning in and watching. I just wanted to mention our board priorities before we get started. We've established these, and been a couple, three years now. They are educational funding, which we will hear a little bit about here in a minute, infrastructure, financial stewardship, land use, public safety, and our county employees. And we'll also hear about some who are retiring soon from us in a little bit, but those are our six priorities that we consider and think about as we make decisions for the future of Johnston County and its citizens. As is customary for us, we open with an invocation. I've asked Commissioner Stevens to lead us in the invocation, and we will follow that with the pledge led by American Legion Post 71 out of Clayton. And with that, if you choose to do so, please stand for the invocation and then stand for the pledge.
Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for this day and for the opportunity to serve our county. As we meet, guide our thoughts and decisions with wisdom and respect. In this month of Thanksgiving, Lord, we're especially grateful for the blessing of freedom and for the veterans who sacrifice makes it possible. May we honor them through how we lead and serve others. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge my pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chairman, if I can take a point of privilege, I just want to thank the commissioners that endorsed me last year to be the Department of North Carolina, you know, the commander for the 32,000 veterans that we have in our state. So it was a first for the county, first for the commissioners. So on behalf of every veteran, American Legion in this county, we just want to say thank you, and I want to put this in your hand, man, thank you.
Thank you.
Point of privilege, it's the only chance I get. You wasn't here at the time, but you can stand in the gap where he was here.
You can give me one, sir. Thank you. Thank you very much.
And I wasn't going to deny you a point of privilege. That's cool.
If y'all can hold that up so we can take a picture with y'all holding that up. Yes, sir. Can I get that with you?
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you.
If y'all can hold that up, if anybody's taking that picture.
Well, you know, if we're going to take the picture, you might as well be in. You might as well get y'all in.
Right. We better get in together.
State commander.
Yeah, that's right. That's right.
Sergeant Major Durham does a great job for the veterans.
Is it up? So they can see it? On the coin, it says inspire, it says engage. And when we inspire, engage as a commissioner, as a county, it says North Carolina wins. So that's what's on the coin. Be the one.
All right, I'll take a few. All right, nobody blink. One, two, take one or four for you. Three. There you go.
Thank you.
Thank you. Don't go anywhere, we got a proclamation. Stay here, yes, stay here.
We'll get that guy out of our seat.
All right, so the next order of business is a proclamation for Veterans Day 2025. Robert Boyet is here to open that up, and I've asked Commissioner Godwin to read the proclamation.
Is he going to speak first?
Yeah, yeah, I was going to say. Do you want to speak first, Robert?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank the board for all that you do to remember and recognize veterans every day, especially Veterans Day and other days throughout the year, and thank the communities and all the citizens of Johnston County for all they do for veterans as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to read this proclamation.
Okay.
Whereas for decades, America has paused on the 11th of November, the anniversary of the armistice that concluded World War I, to remember and honor our veterans of military service in proud and grateful recognition of the hardships and sacrifices by the millions of men and women who have defended our land in war and in peace. And whereas the freedoms we enjoy have been purchased and maintained at a high price, as Americans have been willing throughout our history to fight and die to preserve the individual rights as guaranteed in the United States Constitution and the Bill of Rights. And whereas Americans owe a great deal to all those who have served in defense of this nation throughout the generations for their sacrifices often resulting in permanent injury or death, which have preserved our unique form of government dedicated to human rights and respect for the individual, and preserved our freedoms and promise of liberty as an example for oppressed persons of the world. And whereas in honor of these dedicated men and women, we pledge our continued defense of our nation so that their sacrifice will stand before the entire world as a tribute to the spirit and determination of a people dedicated to the principle of freedom and democracy. Now therefore, the Johnston County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim November 11, 2025, as Veterans Day in Johnston County, and urge our citizens to commend its observance. Proclaim this third day of November 2025. Ms. Chairman, a move this be adopted.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
See you on the 11th with that triple X.
Also a reminder, if you don't have your green light displayed outside your house, still time to buy the green light and get it out there to honor our veterans with Operation Green Light. All right. I'll let everybody readjust and get some seats filled up here. All right, the next item on the agenda is approval of this morning's agenda. You've each had a chance to look at that, or any items that need to be adjusted or not here a motion to approve.
Ms. Chairman, a move approve the agenda.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? The agenda is approved. Next up is the consent agenda. We have seven items this morning for approval. They are approval of the October 6 morning and evening sessions of our meeting, celebrate Cleveland Committee request for temporary road closure for their Christmas parade. We also have the Sheriff's Office request to surplus donated handguns. The town of Pine Level has an appointment for their planning board. We have four budget revisions. Our Health Department, and you will note there was a revision to that budget. Also, the library, the Sheriff's Office, and tourism also had budget revisions. We have two appointments to boards, one is to our Johnston County Board of Health and the other is for our Juvenile Crime Prevention Council. And then finally, we have our tax releases and refunds from September 16 through October 15. Any of those items need to be removed for further discussion?
No, it's Ms. Chairman, a move to approve the consent agenda include, and to include revised Health Department budget revision, which is item E, reducing the amount by $56,857.
A second. All right, do we have a motion and a second? Any other discussion? All those in favor of approving the consent agenda with the noted change in the Health Department budget revision, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries. Next, that brings us to public comments, and we will start the public comment with the introduction of some retiring employees. And as they're walking in, I did want to say thank you to our Human Resources Group for the wonderful employee appreciation celebration that took place last week and all the stuff that went on, and events and postings and all that went with that, to come close to thanking our employees for all they do for us.
We had a lot of fun last week, so thank y'all for your appreciation. So today, I am here, and actually, good morning, Board of Commissioners.
Good morning.
We are here to recognize our one retiree who's already gone as of November, and then our upcoming, we've got a big group of December 2025 retirees. So the first one that I would like to do are the ones who were not able to attend. So we have Stephen McLean with our Emergency Services Department. He was our November, and then the rest of them are all our December. So Catherine Grooms with Department of Social Services. We have here today, as I say your names, feel free to stand up, Jerry McLeod with our Health Department, Rodoffo Cabrera with our Technology Services, Tammy Amon with Sheriff's Office, Thomas Bruce with our Solid Waste Department. And then the other ones that we would like to highlight are our longstanding employees with 30-plus years with Johnston County, so yes. Andrea McAllister, who's in the back, Jennifer Britt, and then Heather Darrell with our Inspections Department, and our other two with our Health Department.
Fantastic.
And then if y'all are good, we would like to do a picture. Absolutely. Before then, yes.
So yeah, I was going to say, as they're coming forward and getting ready for the picture, we have, it must be the day of the challenge coin.
Yeah.
So we do have one of our challenge coins for each one of you to thank you, just a literally a small token of our appreciation for all you have done for the citizens of Johnston County. And it, of course, has the four words on the back. I'll go ahead and get them in for the day. Empowering, compassionate, responsive, and visionary. So we thank y'all for being that and living that every day. Here, let me pass these so y'all can hold these.
Thank y'all so much.
Yeah, let's, feel less. A lot of familiar names up here today.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, now for the more traditional public comment, this is an opportunity for anyone in the audience who wishes to speak to come forward. There's three minutes to speak on a topic that is not on the agenda. Is there anyone here wishing to speak during public comment? All right, seen no one come forward. Madam Clerk, any emails? Okay. Then we will move on to the resolution for Farm City Week. We have Bryant Spivey here to bring us that information.
Thank you so much, and thank you to the entire board for the honor and privilege it is to stand before you this morning and talk a little bit about Farm City Week. This is part of a national celebration that recognizes the partnership that it requires to put food on the table of Americans, not only the farmers that do the work to grow the food, landowners that own the land, at least it do farmers, truckers that haul it, food processors that process it, grocery and retail space that it takes to bring that food to the American table. It's an important partnership. It's something that we certainly all participate in here in Johnston County. It's a celebration that we've done here, and I've been here 19 years, all of those 19 years here in Johnston County. This will be my 20th one, actually, this year, which I look very forward to. And I will comment that the commissioners should all receive an invitation to our banquet on the Tuesday evening before Thanksgiving, I believe that's the 25th. We've got a great program lined up that evening and some tremendous recognition that we will be doing to farmers and in agribusiness that have been instrumental here in our county in the history of agriculture. I want to give a shout out to Adam and Ben for their support in creating some videos that help us highlight some things we're doing during Farm City Week, and that's a tremendous help to us. I want to also mention that in Johnston County, we're in a fairly unique position of being one of the top most populated counties in North Carolina. I think we're probably top 10 in that category, and I didn't look that up. And we're pretty close to top 10 in agriculture here in North Carolina, which is kind of unique when you think about the intersection of population and agriculture. But we do enjoy being a top county in both of those aspects. We're still one of the top producers of tobacco, one of the top producers of sweet potatoes. Those are certainly continue to be major crops, and we trust that a lot of people are going to enjoy sweet potatoes around their Thanksgiving meal. That'll be good for the farms and also healthy for those eating them here in Johnston County. So anyway, thank you for considering this resolution and the time to be with you this morning.
All right, thank you. Any questions, Commissioner Spivey? All right, I've asked Commissioner Davis to read that proclamation for us.
It is my honor and privilege to do that. Having served on the committee, I think this is my 10th year serving on the Farm City Week Committee, so it's my honor and privilege to read the proclamation this morning. National Farm City Week Resolution, November 21 through 27, 2025. Whereas agriculture has always been a cornerstone of Johnston County's way of life, we acknowledge that dedicated farmers improve our well-being by working to ensure a healthy and abundant agricultural supply. To succeed in this important enterprise, our farmers rely on essential partnerships with non-ruled communities to supply, sell, and deliver finished products across the country and around the world. During National Farm City Week, we recognize the importance of this cooperative network to the success of the agricultural industry, and whereas farming was America's first industry and continues today to provide us with many of the necessities of life, such as food, clothing, and fuel for our energy needs. Agriculture employs a substantial number of workers in Johnston County, including farmers, shippers, processors, marketeers, retailers, truck drivers, inspectors, and others who annually contribute more than $723 million in value-added income in Johnston County. And whereas, we welcome new opportunities for trade, hard work, and successful cooperation between farmers and city workers to continue to play a vital role in our country's success and be a critical resource for countless people here and around the nation. And whereas, Farm City collaborations help maintain and improve our nation's food and fiber supply and contribute to a better quality of life for countless citizens. We commend the many Johnstonians whose hard work and ingenuity reflect the true spirit of America and help to ensure a prosperous future for all. And whereas, we gather with family and friends around the Thanksgiving table, it is fitting that we count among our blessings the vital Farm City partnerships that have done so much to improve the quality of our lives. Rural and non-ruled communities working together have made the most of our rich agricultural resources, and they continue to contribute to the health and well-being of our people and to the strength of our economy. Now, therefore, we, the commissioners of Johnston County, do hereby proclaim November 21 through 27, 2025, as Farm City Week. We call upon citizens in rural and city areas to acknowledge and celebrate the achievements of all those who, working together, produce an abundance of agricultural products that strengthen and enrich our community and nation. Proclaim this day, the third day of November 2025, and I request that as a motion.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion, comments? All right, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
See you on the Tuesday before Thanksgiving.
At 6:00.
At 6:00. All right, the next item on the agenda is a presentation on Clayton High School. I think, Lynn, are you going to lead up? We have our school board chair, Lynn Andrews, here to begin that discussion. And thank you, and I would just say that we talked about our priorities, so we have education and financial stewardship rolled up into this one.
You do, you absolutely do. Chair Laura, Vice Chair Harris, it's some joy to be before you today. We also, before I introduce Mr. Moser, I just want to, again, thank you for the cooperation that you've given to us in meeting on this project. I think all of you have been well informed, but now you're going to get a formal presentation from Marty Moser, who is the president of the Barn Hill Building Group. So I'm going to call Marty up.
Thank you, Ms. Andrews, and commissioners, it's a pleasure to be here today. We want to provide you with a thorough update of the design and the path forward for the rebuild of Clayton High School. It was, I'm going to recap a little bit of what we've done over the last seven months. We were engaged in a design-build agreement in late February of this year. We started off with a very fast-paced assessment of the site to do some test fits of a new building program that would allow new construction of a high school on the site while the existing operations continued. We concluded that in April, and then the commissioners authorized another $5 million of design work to advance the documents to a point that we could go to market and get to a guaranteed maximum price. That's, in fact, what we are presenting to you today. Over the course of that seven months, we now stand, we have about 740 sheets of construction documents, a couple thousand pages of specifications. We've been working very closely with the town of Clayton on site plan review. We are in our second round of site plan review comments that's going concurrently with the building permit review process. So we're very close to nearing a position of having permits in hand to where we can commence construction. I'm going to allow Eric Miller, who is our pre-construction manager, to walk you through the current design and walk you through some schedule and sequence and logistics, and then also walk through with you the final pricing. And we're happy to answer any questions that you may have along the way. So thank you again for this morning, for your time.
Thank you. Thank you, Marty. So moving forward, looking at the design of the site plan, and starting at the top right-hand corner, you have the new school building, number one, with the staff parking behind it. Moving right to left, you have the visitors parking, then the existing baseball field with a new press box. To the left of that is the existing soccer and lacrosse field. Moving down, you have a new storage building behind the football grandstands with the existing fieldhouse, number 15, to the right of that. Moving further down, starting at the left of the fields below the football field, you have a practice field with track and field amenities. To the right of that is a new softball field with a new softball press box. And to the right of that is the tennis courts. Above that is student parking with the bus drop-off loop to the right. Looking here, you have the renderings of the front elevation and the rear elevation where the staff enter. Looking at the floor plan, starting from the right, you have the auditorium. To the left of that is sort of the athletic center of the building with the main gym and auxiliary gym. To the left of that is the dining area in pink with administrative spaces in yellow. And to the south is the classroom tower. Second level, you have in green, the media center and library with more administrative space in yellow above that, and the second level of the classroom tower below. And this is the third level of the classroom tower, which is basically a repeat of the second level. Looking at renderings of the interior, this is your main entry. This is your dining area, and with the, you'll notice in the background, there's a comet salvaged piece of the existing basketball court that'll be a focal point of the space. This is the staff entry lobby, main gym, auxiliary gym, auditorium entry with parking to the left, and then the auditorium would be on your right. This is a rendering of the auditorium looking from the back to the front, large version of that. This is the auditorium looking from the stage. It's your media center, and large view of that, a different perspective. This is the phasing logistics plan, so Phase 1 is essentially a two-phase project. First phase would be, in the top right-hand corner, we claim the fields, tennis court, and build the new building while the existing building maintains occupancy. And then for the second phase, we would basically demolish the existing building in orange and complete the remaining site work. Looking at a couple key dates, the final GMP was established on 10/17, and we're looking for a notice to proceed, December 16, 2025. Construction Phase 1 of the home grandstands will start December 16, 2025, and be installed May 2026. The main building will be complete 2027, at the end of that. And then we'll also be demolishing the existing gym from March 2026, ending in July 2026 to provide temporary parking. And then construction Phase 2 would start 2028 and finish up in August 2028. Looking at the financial numbers, Phase 1, as Marty mentioned, Phase 1 was the initial contract for $390,000. Then we had the amendment to that for a design and early work of $4,489,320. And currently, we're looking for Amendment 2 to finalize permitting and complete the construction of the project for $121,501,806, for a total guaranteed maximum price of $126,381,316. Then there's also $8 million of Johnston County Public Schools' direct cost, for a total project cost of $134,381,316, of which $5 million has been previously funded, for a total remaining to be funded of $129,381,316. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Miller, before you, could you go back to the, I guess, the first phase with the demolition? There you go. So I just want to, so the tennis courts and the softball field and the practice field are, if you want, can you slide all the way back to the first conceptional, in the upper-right corner on that one?
You want the original?
Yeah, it's going to go back to the, it's just getting moved to the, basically, the lower left?
Correct.
Corner, okay. So that's the things that are missing. We've got, I guess, the CTE and the existing Adams Gym are going to be part of the new structure itself.
Correct. All functions get, you know, built into the new building.
Okay. All right, that's all. I just wanted to make sure I had that all correct.
Anything else?
Not that I can think of.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
No more questions?
I was going to say, you had a row full of people back there. Did you want to introduce those?
Marty, I'll let you introduce it. You've met Eric.
Yes, so from the Barn Hill Building Group team, I have Matt Turner, Vice President, and Dustin Hale. He's the senior project manager who will be overseeing the project from this point all the way through completion. And then do you want to introduce?
Well, Dr. David Pierce, our superintendent, y'all met him, and Melissa Hubbard, the principal of Clayton High School, who is a Clayton High School graduate, along with one of the commissioners. And we have Matt, Matthew Johnson here, who works in our construction program, and Jeff Sullivan, who is our District 7 representative, which is Clayton, from the Board of Education.
Good to have all y'all here this morning with us.
Thank you. It's a big day for Johnston County Public Schools. So commissioners, after a great deal of planning, discussion, deliberation, and prayer, and with the unanimous vote of the Johnston County Public Schools Board of Education to approve the project of the rebuild of Clayton High School, and on behalf of the Board of Education, I stand before you this morning to make a formal request of an additional balance of $129,381,316 for the Johnston, from the Johnston County Board of Commissioners to complete this Clayton High School rebuild project. We do understand that your approval of this financial contribution to this project is pending the approval of the LGC, the Local Government Commission. But I make that as my formal request to you today, understanding that you need to get some other approvals first. Any questions?
Any questions, comments? Yes, sir.
I had a question. On the athletic facilities buildings, which one, I know you're reusing some of them, and they're some of them, and there'll be some new ones. I know the softball field.
Softball field will be new.
Okay.
The practice track area down your far-left corner will, could serve as a practice area and as an area for track. I believe there's a, there's long, you got your long jump, triple jump, you got your discus and shot put areas there, and the area could be used for other practice areas. It will be marked off, like, I think it'd be about half a football field will be marked off, so that would allow for other practice areas, band, or even the football team practice.
But as far as buildings, the softball, yeah, as far as buildings.
Yeah, like the fieldhouse. Is that going to be staying the same?
The building that's marked as number 15?
Will you stand near the microphone?
Yep, sorry. The building that is marked as number 15 is the existing fieldhouse structure that will remain. And just left of that, you see a little dark square. That is the ticket booth, and that will remain.
Okay.
Okay.
And then, because right now, everyone enters off of South Fayetteville Street, and so whenever, I have to feel like, it's a mirror image, so that now, with the new bill, just for everyone watching and everything like that, the new entrance would be off of Robertson Street.
That's correct. The parent drop-off is off of Robertson Street. You will see the queuing. It's a double-lane, parent drop-off queuing that comes in from Robertson South, that scrolls around that loop that goes towards the football field, scrolls back up, and then the drop-off is right at the front entry that you saw the rendering of, and then they exit back off of Robertson Street. The, the students themselves park in Lot Number Four, and they will enter off of Fayetteville.
Fayetteville Street, okay.
So the, the parent drop-off and the student are not co-mingling in the same entrance.
Okay.
So is that one on the east side? Is that the bus parking with the long spaces?
That's correct. Yes.
Yep.
Okay. I can't see if that's a five or a hundred.
Okay.
Yeah, I didn't have, I didn't have any other. I just, I just wanted to say kind of a little bit of the history, and Ms. Andrews, you may be able to correct me if I step out of line on this, but when this originally came, it was part of the bond package in 20?
It was, it was part of the bond package in 2018. And the bond package at that point included an auditorium for Clayton High School. As we moved through the projects in 2018, number one, the finances became less and less, but as we looked at putting an auditorium into an old building, it didn't really look like the best option for nine or 10 million dollars, to put nine or 10 million dollars into a building that was this old. And as, if you've been in Clayton High School, you understand, it is not built in compliance with what we have now. So, you know, the idea became, and that's when we started talking with y'all about, what about rebuilding Clayton High School? And we first looked at the option, very, very lightly looked at the option of going somewhere else and building it, buying more land and building it. But then it became very apparent that we could do this on the site in which the school was, and that's when we sort of started this whole process, which y'all were involved in, with selecting designers and, and going forth on that. So that's how we sort of got to this unusual situation, where you are rebuilding a school on the campus of another school. Now, that's been done in Johnston County, but it's been quite a few years since that's done. Wilson Mills Elementary was built that way. There's several other schools that were built that way. So, yeah, Princeton was built that way. So this is sort of a, a new idea right now for us, but it is something that's been done. And we feel very confident in the safety of children during this process, because as you can see, the construction's going to be going on, the children are going to be in a whole different location. So we, we feel very good about the security of this campus, the parking of this campus, because we do take away some parking spaces, but Ms. Hubbard is, really feels confident that there will be enough parking for what we need.
I had an occasion to tour the, the old school about a year and a half ago, when this discussion first came up about building here in sight. And, of course, I can remember when a high school cost $45 million, and that was an overrun. But I must say, it has evolved in, in a manner that, much better than I thought it could, because we talked about busing students from other sites, you know, parking sites. So I think y'all have done a good job of figuring out how to make this work.
I feel very good about it, and I believe the people at Clayton High School feel good about it, because really, you know, it's, it's, they have, have a say-so in it, because they're the ones who have to live with this, but I feel very good about it. I will say that the address of Clayton High School will change, because the front door will be on a different street. So I'm not sure how the timing of that takes place, but the address will, will be a different address, but the same school.
600 South Fayetteville Street.
Yeah, that's right. It will, it will be a different address. You know, any other questions?
Um, how many, I know, because there's been so many add-ons of Clayton High School. How old, or what year was the original part of that building?
In the 50s, I think.
Built?
It should be in the 50s.
And that would have been like the cafeteria and the main entrance, I believe, maybe?
Yeah. The old, the old gym, you know what I'm talking about?
Yeah, the old gym and all that.
Back there on that side, other side over there.
On that side. And then, I know, like, each hallway has been an addition, almost, I feel like, every decade.
That's right. That's right.
Has been an addition.
That's right. I will say that the entrance area coming onto the football field, which is, it's not numbered, but it's where the tunnel is, they call it the tunnel. We were so glad that we all agree that that needs to be made handicap accessible in a sense of its incline. Am I right there, Marty? That we, and so that will happen. That's not really on this, but that's part of this plan, because really, right now, to get, a wheelchair to get on the football field, they have to come over here to the visitors' bleachers to safely enter. So that will be leveled to the point where it meets standards of ADA, which we have tried to do in all our campuses, to become ADA compliant. But I'm, I'm happy that that is possible now for our visitors who want to get on that track, graduation, senior night, whatever it is that may need additional support. Any other questions?
I have a question. I know the, the address is changing, and the entry is moving over to Robertson Street from Fayetteville Street. Are there any off-site traffic flow improvements out of part of this project, or contemplated by either the town or DOT?
I'll let Eric speak to that, because there is a situation you might want.
There is one off-site improvement where a, a traffic signal will be added at Fayetteville and 70.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Did that answer your question?
Yes, ma'am.
And then also for this, talking about the safety of students, I know a couple people have reached out with safety concerns of traffic going on, construction going on while students, but as it was mentioned, you know, you're going to, from one end of the campus to the other. How many doors and entrances are at the curtain?
100 and what?
Curtain, curtain state school.
It's over 100, isn't it?
I, I brought this with me. Currently, Clayton High has 94 exterior doors in the current campus.
And then how many will the new building have?
28 points of entry on the new.
So that would definitely increase the safety of students and staff.
It's hard to secure 94 doors.
It is.
With 1,900 children, 22,000 kids.
A lot of entrances and exits.
Any other?
Mr. Miller, a quick question, if you don't mind. Come, so the, at Fayetteville Street, would, so now you come out and you can only take, is that going to be left turns too, you can go back out and go 70 East, or what's the style on Fayetteville Street?
It's talking about the, the traffic signal improvement?
Yeah, the traffic signal, yeah.
The, um, it will be, it'll be regulating, it'll be a single pole, and I do not, to be honest with you, I can, can I get back on that?
Yeah, I did, yeah. I didn't know if it was going to have a traffic signal, you have a left-hand turn out of there too, instead of just a right?
There's no improvements to the actual street.
Okay.
It's just a traffic signal. That's all that's going on. So they're not adding a turn lane or anything.
Okay. Okay. All right. Thank you. And I was just going to say, when you talk about the evolution of the project, you're talking about 2018 and the auditorium. Even when it came in 2024, as part of the bond package, one of the reasons, I think we, both boards agreed that we wanted to make sure if we were going to go with, what at the time, I think was $113 million for a different configuration and renovation, and kids were going to Wilson's Mills for two years and back, and someone mentioned the busing, or transporting kids from some parking lot somewhere to the campus and all that. But one of the things that both boards agreed on, we wanted to make sure that a project on this campus was going to work, and we weren't going to be halfway into a project and figure out that, well, it's not going to work. So I think that's one of the reasons for the pause that got us to this year, as we, we did that evaluation and found out, yes, indeed, it, it can happen. The circumstances, we may not know 100% of everything, but we have a much better idea than we did two years ago, a year and a half ago, what we were going into. And then, in fact, I would say, a very clever arrangement of taking a Wilson Mills-like high school, almost exactly the same, because we had to bend it a little bit. But we were able to take it and put it on a part of a campus and not interfere with the daily operations, maybe some traffic flow and parking, but for the biggest, the students could still go to school
Yes.
on this campus and not be disrupted for those who were, you know, going to finish school and have to go somewhere else for two years. So I think a tremendous amount of thought has gone in to this, and I want to thank Barn Hill and the LS3P team for the creativity, and thank, I would think, incredible, why don't we just take what we are doing right now and build it here? And I think that has saved us a, a tremendous amount of time in moving forward with this project. So again, I want to thank you and your board. I mean, we were brought in with the selection of the, the team, the Barn Hill LS3P team. So in many meetings along the way, tours of campus, all, all the things that we've been involved in, I would say, historically, we haven't been involved in the process. So this is not only kind of a, a unique school that we're doing all this, not quite unique, we mentioned the other schools building on campus, but this whole process, I think, I mean, I, I think I can speak for the Board of Commissioners, that we, we have been a part of this, unlike any other project in, in the history of, of Johnston County. So we thank you for that opportunity.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
We're thrilled to have you a part of this. We're all in this together. Any other questions?
I have a question. I've had some constituents ask me. So what is going to be the targeted capacity of the school, and how many students will they have when it opens?
Which, which school we talking about?
This Clayton High School.
Uh, well, it would depend on how many we move from Clayton High to Wilson's Mills. I would guess around 1,700?
1,700.
1,700 is what we're looking at right now. Um, yeah, it seats 2,000, but it'd be 1,700. Uh, you know, we will gradually move kids from the, as we open Wilson Mills High School, I'm going to a different school now. And I can't wait to invite you out there. This place is huge. So we, we look forward to having y'all out to see some of the final work on that. But the idea is to gradually move students from, from Corinth, Clayton, and Cleveland, and Triple S. But you know, we're going to phase that in. So that will gradually reduce their enrollments, and that's the whole idea, is to try to, it would be nice if we could get, if we, if you open Clayton High School with around 1,700 kids, there's great room for growth right there. You don't, you don't fill it up the first day.
Well, that was one of the questions, because Clayton is a growing area.
That's right. And that's, that's the situation we found ourselves in, in other facilities that have been built in past years, is you open it and you're already full. This gives us an opportunity at all these schools to add additional students, which is really what, what you'd like to have.
So what, what would be the optimal capacity if it was, if it was being fully utilized?
2,000.
2,000, okay.
This is built for 2,000, so is Wilson's Mills. It's very similar design, 2,000 students. Any others?
I was just wondering if you could, for the public watching at home, the $8 million direct cost to JCPS, just so, so everybody will understand what that is.
That, that's going to be the items that are inside the school.
Mm-hmm.
That's your, your furniture. Dr. Pierce, your furniture, your technology, you want to add to that?
Yeah, be any kind of costs we incur as far as moving them. As you saw in the timeline, we're going to be doing a, a quick switch between Christmas and the start of year, moving costs, technology, furniture, equipment that goes inside the building itself.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, as he said, we are going to pay to move these teachers into these facilities over the holidays, this new facility, so, which we think is the right thing to do.
Yeah. I do have one, one comment, and I've probably been as involved as anybody in this whole process. And, and, you know, we've, we've talked a lot about it, and went to a couple of the community meetings up in Clayton. And, and I really want to say that there's been a lot of effort put in by the Board of Education, our Superintendent, our, our Principal, Barn Hill, LS3P, the Board of Com, I mean, everybody has worked so diligently to get there. And, and I'm really excited about the end result. I think that the people of Johnston County will really be proud of this facility when it's all said and done. And more importantly, the, you know, the folks in Clayton, I think, will have something they can really be proud of. If you haven't toured Clayton High School, you don't quite get the, the dramatic change and difference, but it is much needed. And I think this is going to be really a, a fine example of everybody working together cooperatively to make something happen. And I think we'll, we'll be, we'll be better for it.
I do, too. We, you know, we're all responsible, especially our Board of Education, for, for providing a sound, basic education to all children. And part of that sound basic education is the facility in which they are instructed. And we're just so grateful to each of you for your commitment to the, a project such as this, and all the other projects that you support.
I'm excited about the parent drop-off line of being able to actually have a carpool line and not up on the Fayetteville Street.
Yeah, yeah. Parent drop-off is a challenge at every school, but our, our staff has it down to a science, if you've traveled to many of our schools. But parent drop-off is a, you have to be very careful about that. But this, this lends itself very, to a very smooth transition.
I imagine the Clayton PD will be glad for that.
Yes, yes, yes.
I'm sure.
Is that, are you, are everybody okay? Any other questions?
All right.
I did, I did want to make a formal invitation to each of you and to the community to come and attend our Veterans Day celebration on Tuesday, November the 11th, as we honor the veterans. It's one of the, the greatest events we host in Johnston County. And, you know, I, as you, as you were saying, Mr. Godwin, that facility, I found an old article that my mother saved, and Triple S cost $2 million to build in 1969.
Wow.
So we welcome you to Triple S, the $2 million school, as we celebrate Veterans Day on the 11th month, on the 11th day at the 11th hour.
Right.
So, as has been charged to all Americans. So thank you so much for your support, and we look forward to meeting with you again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And if, could I ask Mr. Hester to come? I know the, the finance piece, and we can get this on the record, but if you want to talk through about that process that
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Andrews referred to with the Local Government Commission approval.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, board members. I also want to thank Dr. Pierce and the Board of Education for all the transparency on the staff. The staff level's been very important, too, is, you know, this project, and, and we would recommend, and certainly the board can do as you wish, but we'd recommend the board wait and take action on this, possibly on November 17th, because we have a call next week with the Local Government Commission staff. And, you know, we'll be, if approved, we will be borrowing these funds. So in North Carolina, the North Carolina Local Government Commission is the authority to allow local governments to borrow funds. So it's very important that we, and they are aware of this project, but we need to have a couple more conversations with them. I want to thank Chad McLam. He's run multiple models on this, as we look at the affordability of it. And thankfully, we're in good financial shape and have a AAA bond rating. That is a great start for these type of projects. So we have the call next week, and then, assuming everything is okay to move forward, then we would come back to the Commissioners on November 17th. One of the things that we're going to be talking with the Local Government Commission about is the timing of this, because, as you saw on the screen, the Barn Hill's ready to go to work middle of December. If the Local Government Commission requires that the audit is here and has been approved by the Board of Commissioners before they will give the final authorization, then we may have a gap of time. We may come to the Commissioners and say, after talking with LGC, we certainly will be transparent with them about the possibility of fronting some funds for this project to get started until we can actually do the loan. So, and, and then we would have the final request for permission from the, next week's with the staff of the Local Government Commission, and then it would be with the commission, the elected folks there in Raleigh for that. So again, we would probably, would, this would likely be a, a 20-year note, fixed rates, and we anticipate another strong bond rating. And we're thankful to have a call with LGC next week to get this process started. And I think we have a pretty good story to tell here. So, is any questions from?
Any questions for Mr. Hester?
Just a comment, Mr. Chairman. I hope, well, I'm, I'm sure they realize, as we all do, that time is money. So anytime we put this thing off, it gets, it gets more expensive, so.
Yes, sir. We certainly.
We'll move forward.
We would be transparent with the Local Government Commission staff about the possibility of fronting some funds to keep this project going. And we certainly want their feedback on that. If they come back and say they have a problem with that, then we're going to have to discuss how we work through all that. But, but anyway, that's sort of a highlight of what we've got prior to your November 17th board meeting.
So based on that, we shouldn't be able, we shouldn't have any problems meeting the December 16th start date that they're
Yes, sir.
Because it's my understanding, if we exceed that, then there's a lot's going to change. And so we need
As long as the Local Government Commission is okay with us fronting funds, and the Board of Commissioners, obviously, we should be fine. But that's the question we want to talk, that's one of the things we want to talk them about on that call.
All right. Very good. Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions, comments? All right. We will bring this to a vote on the 17th?
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank y'all. We'll give y'all a minute to, to clear out there.
Thank you.
Thank y'all for being here today.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right. The next item on the agenda is a resolution declaring official intent to reimburse expenditures for land purchase for Johnson Community College West Campus. And we have our Finance Director, Chad McLam, here to present that to us.
Yes. And before I get, with, there will be, we will be probably
Yes, and before I get, we will be, probably at some point in the future, coming to another reimbursement resolution on any amounts we front for the Clayton High School as well.
Yes.
So this is a precursor for another project that we're doing. It's for the Johnston Community College West Campus, and the staff is requesting the Board adopt a resolution to declare an official intent to reimburse expenditures on that project, on that land, with the proceeds of debt that we're going to issue. This will allow the county, if you wish, to be reimbursed for the cost of the land that was paid for out of county funds.
All right, any questions for Mr. McLam?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt the resolution as presented by the Finance Director.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries.
One more thing before I leave.
Get it all in.
Yeah, we'll get it all in. I was just, we were notified, and I don't know if you've got the letter yet, but the GFOA has issued our Finance Department another certificate of achievement and excellence in financial reporting, so I think this is about the 15th year in a row.
Wow.
I don't want to embarrass those folks back there. They're accountants, they like to sit and stay in the background, but you have the best staff in the state.
For the benefit of our audience, Chad, explain the GF.
Yes, it's part of the audit, we have to put together another report that goes to the Government Finance Officers Association, they're out of the United States and Canada. They review that for some parameters on how we report our finances, and it's usually about 15 or 20 parameters, and we got excellence in every parameter. You only have to meet a certain majority of those, and we got excellence in every one of them. And so it happens every year.
Outstanding.
That's fantastic.
And they rate ours as excellent.
Great job.
Thank you.
So I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next we have Shandra Farmer, our Public Utilities Director, here to present to us on Bulk Water and Wastewater Agreement between Johnston County and Town of Clayton, Cornwallis Road Development Area.
Yes.
Ms. Farmer, good morning.
Good morning. This, we've worked with the Town of Clayton staff on this proposed agreement, and the proposed agreement would allow the Town of Clayton to serve several parcels off of Cornwallis Road, just south of Veterans Parkway, that are requesting annexation by the Town of Clayton. Those parcels on the document that you have are entitled the Kenny Property and the Troxler Jurgen Property. Those have current development plans by private development companies. This agreement would allow the Town of Clayton to provide retail water and sewer service to those parcels, plus several additional parcels, if they are annexed in the future, that are contiguous with those tracks. You can see those outlined, there's an exhibit of the agreement that you should have a copy of, and you can see those additional parcels as well. Under this arrangement, the county would provide bulk water and sewer service to the Town of Clayton, in order for the town to provide the retail service to these parcels. The agreement requires the town to transfer a portion of their existing wastewater treatment capacity and transmission capacity that they already own in the county system. They would transfer it to this area and use the capacity in that manner. The town would also be responsible to construct, or have constructed, a half a million gallon flow equalization facility that would be located at the county's existing Swift Creek Wastewater Pump Station. That's also identified on that exhibit. This will be the main facility where the county will receive the flow from these projects in this area. Basically, we'll take the retail flow from the Town of Clayton at this point, this is where it becomes bulk wastewater, and we'll transmit it back to our treatment facilities from this point. That's an existing pump station the county planned and constructed several years ago that does have sufficient capacity to serve these tracks. The town would be responsible also to install or have installed all of the required master metering for water and sewer to serve these properties. Of course, they would pay the county monthly, just like they do now, for the retail services that we do provide to, the bulk services that we provide to the town. Are there any questions on the agreement?
Shandra, in our exhibit, the two parcels are located at an intersection of Veterans Parkway. What's the other street? It's not labeled.
Cornwallis. Yes, Cornwallis Road. Oh, I didn't realize that was not labeled on here. Yes, that is Cornwallis Road, the main road through there.
Right.
Okay.
It was attached to the, on the agreement.
Okay, that's okay. We're just trying to get that up on the screen so the public can see what we're talking about.
Yeah.
All right, I did just want to make sure, I know we talked about the existing bulk agreements, so there's not any new allocations of water and sewer here at Clayton?
No, there are no new allocation here. We do require the town to pay an additional fee to buy some transmission capacity from this basin. They are transferring treatment capacity they currently own that's in the Highway 70, US 70, what we call our US 70 basin, the East Clayton Industrial Area. So that transmission capacity had a little less cost than what it costs to transmit it from this drainage area, this sewer basin, so they are paying a little bit of additional cost for that. That's the only, otherwise, treatment capacity just moves from one location to the other.
All right, yeah, I just wanted to make clear on that. Any other questions, comments? And I do, and I will just add this, when you see that, even though it's sideways on the screen, it was one challenge after the other, at least we found it now it's sideways, but that's Cornwallis, I guess, running sideways across.
That white little dot there south of the road, that's our Cleveland Fire Department?
Yes, that's Fire Station 3.
Okay.
And I will say, there are other discussions, so that, I know this looks isolated now, but there are other discussions about utility service areas going on that are, they're not in infancy, but they're still, they're in initial stages of happening, so just for folks who are curious about that, so. Any other questions or comments? All right, I hear a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the agreement.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, we usually have our Tax Administrator, Johnson Landry, is here, but she's celebrating the birth of a grandbaby, granddaughter, grandson?
Daughter.
Granddaughter. So with that, we have Dennis Woodward here, who knows what it's like to be a grandparent, too, so.
And he knows what it's like to be a veteran, aren't you a Marine?
Yes, sir. All right, there we go, we got it covered today.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I'm here to report September's collection report. I want to note that the levy, for the first time, includes the public service bills in the September report. It's up to about two, a little over $214 million. Currently, we are 5% collected higher than last year, so that's always good. Does anyone have any questions?
Anyone have any questions? All right.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, manager report and comments.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So about 30 years ago, when the rural water districts were established in Johnston County, somewhere along in that timeframe, the policy was put in place, if someone was in 350 feet of a public water line, they had to tap onto the water, and it's been that way. And I think the reason was, a lot of the funding back then through USDA Rural Development, it was called Farmer's Home back then, was to make sure that there was going to be enough money to pay the debt on those projects. But after review of that, wanted to just bring to the Board a consideration and suspend, temporarily suspend that policy while it's under review for modifications, and basically make it for new individual residents, which applies to single-family lots, not part of a larger common plan of development, temporarily suspending that while it's under review. Any questions?
Any questions? Any idea on the number of connections?
Ms. Farmer, that probably has a better, I don't think-
Any idea on the number of connections that we're talking about potentially?
Yeah, it would be a small quantity. The great majority of our new connections and new construction is-
Could you come closer to the microphone?
The vast majority of our new connections and new construction are part of a larger common plan of development with a subdivision, so this would be those single individual parcels.
Okay, thank you.
You know, this time of year, in Veterans Day, we always talk about freedom and individual freedoms. So this, to me, is a new freedom, so I would be in favor of this.
Yeah.
I agree.
When we say a small number, in a year's time, do you think it were in the dozens? What kind of number, I guess, is a small number?
So typically, we have 1,500 to 2,000.
Could you come back up again? Just stay close, I'm feeling just linger there.
We typically have about 1,500 to 2,000 new connections per year, and I would say this would be less than 10% of that.
Okay.
And I think it would be important to evaluate this as we go, and to update the Commissioners on the numbers, because just like with any policy, the Board can change policies anytime.
Yep. I think this is, this is great, as Commissioner Godwin mentioned earlier, like I said, if someone was willing to all of a sudden just build a house on family land, and if they were within that 350 feet of that water line, they would have to tap on instead of being having the option of a well. And so I think this is, like I said, I've had several requests as well regarding this situation, so I think, like I said, it would help with those freedoms and not necessarily having some, another water user or customer as well, so.
Mr. Hester, I have a question. Those homeowners that choose to pursue a well in lieu of tapping into the county system, what is the general process for doing that, with permit involved?
Right, and then you would go through the Environmental Health Office, which is a subsection of the Public Health Department, and they're based in the land use center. And I'm sure they have a very customer-friendly process for that.
To get your well.
Any other questions?
And there may be some communication with public utilities just for information purposes.
Right, we need to make a motion.
Yes.
Yeah, I move that we approve that suggestion by staff.
All right, you want to get it all in there?
I'm ready if you will.
We have magic words to get in there.
Well, yes, we do. Let me find it. Individual, new individual residents, which applies to single-family lots, not part of a larger common plan of development, shall be temporarily suspended while the policy is under review for modification. I move that to adopt.
All right, second. We have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One quick thing, if I may.
All right.
Tonight at the Board meeting, I think Mr. Newton's going to kind of brief the Board on some scheduling ideas for the UDO, for that process to complete, so just wanted to mention that.
Good, look forward to hearing those.
Thank you.
All right, and last Chairman Harris, I'm going to start with you this morning.
I'm going to be on the spot.
Sorry, I didn't give you a heads up on that.
No, I don't have anything to add, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, though.
Okay. Mr. Rose?
Last weekend was Harvest Festival in Clayton, and I was able to attend that, and had not actually been in Harvest Festival before. I'd heard it was a big event, and it is a big event, and it was great to meet a lot of people, and got to get in a few debate and discussions with people who were either happy or sad of some of our decisions, but it was great to be out there with the constituents and explain some things, and just meet a lot of smiling faces, and it was a, hats off to Clayton and that festival, it was a well-run event.
All right, thank you. Mr. Davis?
Yeah, two weeks ago was the Farm Bureau Annual Meeting in Smithfield, and it was great to see Commissioner Shovall, as well as Commissioner Rose at that event, and then also just excited to see where all the progress that we've been made on our goals. I know we've had a lot of updates and stuff going on this week, as well as other meetings as well in the past couple of weeks, so always exciting to see all the processes and things happening in the county. And then also municipal elections are tomorrow, so make sure, if you are in a municipal, to make sure you get out and vote tomorrow.
Mr. Chairman, I don't have anything to add this morning. Mr. Dullin?
Saturday, Banner Post 109, American Legion in Benson, had their annual observance celebration for veterans. They had a veterans parade put on by the post and supported by the chamber and the town. And it was a very good event. I went, they asked me to speak at it, and they had a barbecue cook-off, typical things of small-town USA. And I made a statement there that that morning, Saturday morning, there was no place I'd rather be than with those people. And it was a good time, and I urge everybody that can come out to Triple S High School next Tuesday for the annual Johnston County Veterans Celebration to be there as well. That's all.
All right, thank you. I did have a couple of things. Commissioner Davis had mentioned progress, and I know I spoke to the management and mentioned it to the Board, but if you go back to our March meeting for our strategic planning session that we had, those two days, and look at the goals that we had established, and I'm going to use round numbers, but about 2/3 of those we have either completed or significantly along the way of completing. So when folks go and take a look at what this Board is doing, is, and we've talked, I know we have referenced sometimes kicking the cans down the road, but if we have established something at a goal, we are moving towards getting those out. We had the UDO coming up, I can't wait to hear the final, what is the schedule to get that one completed and across the finish line. But just wanted to mention, since you brought up the progress, that if you take a look at that, this Board has moved a lot of things down the road and getting things finished and done, so thank you for all your efforts on that. The other thing I wanted to bring up, since we were talking about the monitoring, the change in the policy on the water connection, is one that we recently changed was the stormwater ordinances and requirements, and that was something that was all new to us, and I think at the time I'd mentioned about, let's take a look and see what the impact of that is. And so I think from listening to the Planning Board meeting from last week, or two weeks ago, whenever that was, to listening to that, I think there's probably some cases there. So if you will direct staff to take a look at a way we can evaluate that and bring that back to the Board, that we can take a look and see what that impact has been, and we may or may not do anything with it, but if we're going to take and implement policies, and I think as we're implementing policies, UDO, land use plan, they're all continually updated, so if you can bring that back to us, we'll see where we are, but that's-
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
In that regard, maybe this is not fair to ask, but what's your initial thoughts on feedback so far? Which way does it need to go?
I don't know, I don't know the answer to that. I haven't had a lot, I mean, I know, had a lot of speculation on it, but I don't know that, I haven't seen anything that said, here's what it is, and I know we've got some cases from the Planning Board now, we can say, here's what it was under the old, and then, you know, here's what it would be possibly under the new, and see what that is. Because I know it's a fine line between improving the quality of developments we have, but also keeping things affordable, so.
Yeah, I knew it was started with good intent and hopefully that's-
Yeah, yeah, but I haven't seen anything one way or the other, so it's still, okay. All right, if anybody else have any final things? We do have a need to go into closed session, there will not be any action anticipated at the end of that session, so.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Board go into closed session for the purposes of discussing matters relating to the location or expansion of industries or other businesses in the area pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A4.
Second. All right, we have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? We will go into closed session after a minute to clear the room.